Yes, yes. As you want. Nice.
Well, we're asking for winners.
Oh, you notice I noticed that you're here unaccompanied. You're an unaccompanied senior. Well, that's why Roar is behind you.
I'm not sure, men seem to be...
You can do a lot in a day. I don't know what you mean about weeks. Yeah. Women calculate when they leave based on how much damage you can do when they're not there and how much work they'll have to do to fix it when you get back.
That's a true fact.
Nice. It's next Monday. I will go to that thing, though. Will you be there?
All right, it is nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Commissioner Donkey is not present today. I'll be chair. If will please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we pause to acknowledge your presence in this place and thank you for the ways you are already at work in our lives. We praise you in advance for what you will accomplish here today. Your word reminds us in First Samuel 2:2, "There is none holy like the Lord; there is none beside you; there is no rock like our God." We invite your spirit to move in and through all that is said and done here. Grant the commissioners the wisdom they need to honor you in their decisions, their lives, and their leadership of Bonner County. Bring clarity where there is difficulty and provide answers that unmistakably reveal your hand at work in this meeting and in our community. Help the commissioners lean wholly on you and not their own understanding. Strengthen them to hold fast to you in times of blessing and in times of challenge. Reveal yourself to them in fresh, undeniable ways. As Isaiah 57:15 declares, "For thus says the one who is high and lifted up, who inhabits eternity, whose name is holy. I dwell in the high and holy place and also within him, who is of contrite and lowly spirit, to revive the spirit of the lowly and to revive the hearts of the contrite." We offer ourselves to you, Lord. Use our lives for your purposes. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is adopting the order of agenda.
I move to amend the order of the agenda to remove the items under Human Resources and District One Commissioner update.
I'll step down in a second. Any public comment? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Now, I'll accept a motion on the order of agenda as amended.
I so moved.
Public comment? Any none?
You have to second.
I'll step down in a second. Get ahead of myself. Any public comment? Any deliberation?
No deliberation.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. I will now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll step down in second. Is there any public comment? Is there any poor deliberation?
No deliberation.
Roll call vote, please. Yes.
Yes.
Clerk is up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. For you, I have claims batch number 51 totaling $764,355.75. The big-ticket items in this batch is software for technology in the amount of $95,000, computers in the amount of $25,000. We have solid waste contracted labor, $42,000. Tort insurance for liability at about $60,000. Tort deductible at $15,000. Highway road and bridge, we have a $110,000 contract. Airport grants, we have $21,000. And self-insured medical and pharmacy is $220,000.
Questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
This time, I'll entertain a motion.
Based on information before us, I move to approve payment of FY '25 claims in batch 51 totaling $764,355.75.
I'll step down in a second. Is there any public comment? Any further deliberation?
No deliberation.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up Prosecutor's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have... You should have received the request for the grant money to be applied to Lilybrook. And we would ask for acceptance of the prosecution's additional money for Lilybrook. If the Commissioners have any questions.
Would you mind just reading the memo? Do you have the memo?
I don't have the memo.
I can read it for him.
Thank you.
Lilybrook Family Justice Center has received grants from the Idaho State Child Advocacy Center, CAC Grant Program in the amount of $233,750 for FY 2026, grant cycling ending 6/30/26. Before, Lilybrook Family Justice Center may utilize the funds, the Board of County Commissioners must accept the funds by opening the budget and allocating them appropriately. Lilybrook Family Justice Center will use these funds in accordance with CAC guidelines for assisting victims.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move for the board to approve Resolution 25... 2025-68, authorizing the receipt of unanticipated revenue in the total amount of $233,750 for use by Lilybrook Family Justice Center in accordance with CAC guidelines for the furtherance of its mission to support victims of violence in Bonner County.
I'll step down in a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any poor deliberation?
No deliberation for me.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Yes.
All right, next item. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Are you presenting number two or...
You're up still.
You don't get off that easy.
You've got three. Three are Prosecutor's Office.
Three.
It's for the... It's still for the Lilybrook grant.
Okay, okay. So that... Okay, so all three of these are for the Lilybrook. The... We would ask for, again, the passage of that grant money to be applied as is in the memo.
So I'll read the memo.
Would you please? Thank you so much.
All right. CAC Grant subsidized Salary Increases for LBFJC, which is the Lilybrook Family Justice Center staff and the financial officer. The Lilybrook Family Justice Center has been awarded $233,750 in Idaho State CAC Grant Funds for FY 2026. While this award represents a significant investment in victim services, CAC spending restrictions make it challenging to fully apply the funds without directed allocations. Without proper utilization, unspent monies must be returned to the state resulting in no lasting benefit to Bonner County or families we serve. The Children's Advocacy Center Grant Guidelines specifically allow the use of funds to support staffing and organizational stability. The 2024 National Children Alliance Staffing and Salary Survey confirms that salary adjustments are primary retention strategy, especially for rural CAC where the staff perform multiple roles. Proposed increases include CAC Director, $10,000. That's a 13.7% increase, brings pay closer to rural CAC benchmark, and reflects oversight of administration, coordination, grant compliance, and staff supervision. Assistant Director, Forensics Interview CAC Staff Advocate, $7,500. That's a 10.4%. Recognizes the dual role of daily operational management and forensic interviews. Forensic interviews are among the hardest positions to retain. The current staff member was promoted to this role in April 2025 without a pay adjustment. Felony Victim Witness Coordination CAC Staff Advocate... You really got off with me reading this one. $7,512.8% supports retention in a role critical to trial readiness, victim participation, and coordination with prosecutors. The current staff member was also promoted to this role in April 2025 without a pay adjustment. CAC Financial Officer, Office Manager, $5,500. That's an 8.5% increase. Manages fiscal accountability, grant reporting, and administrative oversight for both LBFJC and the Prosecutor's Office. The FY 2026 CAC Award has expanded the scope of financial and compliance requirements alongside recent growth in positions and program responsibilities. This increase reflects the growing complexity of duties and ensures adherence to the stringent fiscal standards. We respectfully request your approval of the use state CAC Grant Funds to subsidize salary increases for Lilybrook Family Justice Center, CAC Staff, and CAC Financial Officer in accordance with National Children's Alliance Guidelines and CAC Grant Parameters. Approval of this trust will authorize use of CAC Grant Funds to subsidize salary increases for LBFJC, CAC Staff, and the CAC Financial Officer, ensuring funds are invested in LBJC operations, improving retention, and strengthening program sustainability rather than being returned unused. This will be... There will be no impact to the county general fund. Salary adjustment will be fully covered by the CAC Grant Award and will be considered supplemental pay and our contingent upon the availability of CAC Grant Funding. In the event CAC Grant Funds are reduced or unavailable, the supplemental pay will be discontinued and base salaries will revert to their original amounts. You're welcome.
You did that way better than I would have.
Do you have any questions?
No, just a comment that Prosecutor's Office did a very good job of explaining to the public how the money was going to be allocated. This particular grant has us needing to remember that this is really only for that one year. And so there's the potential that we're going to need to identify if this is something that we need to address in the next fiscal year after this because it was identified as necessary, but the position will go away if there's no grant funding. So we need to be mindful of the positive impact that this change will make in the county in reporting that out. So that was my only comment, but whoever wrote this did a good job of explaining it.
Thank you.
And I... My question was, what happens if we don't get this grant next year? And that is explained in that last sentence there, that if the grant money goes away, that it's basically a temporary supplemental pay and that will be discontinued. So it's not like it'll cost the county next year if we don't get this grant. Correct. All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that the board approve Resolution Number 25-69, authorizing the use of CAC Grant Funds to subsidize salary increases for LBFJC, CAC Staff, and CAC Financial Officer, ensuring funds are invested in LBFJC operations, improving retention, and strengthening the program's sustainability.
I'll step down in a second. Is there any public comment on this? Dave Bowman.
Good morning, Dave Bowman. Just a small housekeeping matter. I wonder, could we get the gentleman at the podium to identify himself for the record?
My name is Nate Adams. I'm with the Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Or deliberation?
No deliberation at this time.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Last item.
The Prosecutor's Office has the court-appointed special advocate attorney agreement. And if I could ask for Commissioner Williams' assistance again, I would appreciate that.
Sure. Am I getting paid? Today, I should get prosecutor pay right now. The Prosecutor's Office is submitting for approval a court-appointed special advocate attorney agreement with Margaret Williams pursuant to Idaho Code 16-16144B. Well, this was reviewed by auditing in the Prosecutor's Office. So essentially, the contract is made and entered into by and between Bonner County, a political subdivision of the state of Idaho, referred to as county, and Margaret Williams Attorney at Law, herein referred to as the attorney for valuable consideration, including the mutual promises hereinafter set forth. It is agreed between the county and attorney in their individual capacities as follows. So there's a legal services, licenses, training, and compensation identified. The attorney shall be paid at an hourly rate of $225 for legal services through the period ending September 30, 2026. It is agreed that the payment of the above-described compensation will include payment of attorney, secretarial allowance, and other allowances under Idaho Code 16-16144B for any expenses, including office-based furniture equipment, books, postage, supplies necessary in carrying out the duties under this agreement. However, said allowances for expenses may be increased for extraordinary services and expenses not recurring on a regular basis if authorized by court order after notice to Bonner County and a hearing to consider the same. Such extraordinary services and expenses may be paid in addition to the hourly contract amount. The attorney shall comply with and meet all standards as imposed by law upon court-appointed counsel. There is a direct expense, a withdrawal of attorney, withdrawal of county, relationship of parties, indemnification, assignment, and a waiver, attorney fees, and a complete agreement aspect of this contract. It is a standard contract as it relates to contracted service with outside counsel.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
I can't afford questions at this point.
I just have one. Can you tell me real briefly what the duties of this attorney will be?
That is... I believe it's for... Yeah, any conflicts with our office that would... We'd hire out outside counsel to take over.
So I think that Nate is our new Board of Commissioners. He's our new attorney that's going to work with us. And so on this one, this is where Bonner County sometimes will say we need to send something out. Sometimes the Prosecutor's Office will have a conflict of interest because they can't work a case. Or sometimes we'll have it where we have an individual who has a crime committed and they were in pairs, and we have to find attorneys for both, so we can't do both, so we have to send it out. So this is a standard, typical contract that we have with outside counsel when we hit a bump where we need to have someone else take a case out of their office.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
Motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the court-approved special advocate attorney agreement with Margaret Williams.
I'll step down in a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any further deliberation?
No.
Roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes.
Now, thank you, but motion passes.
Thank you, Nate.
Next item, airports. Director Shuck.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Shuck, Airport Manager. I have one item. I have the opportunity to purchase a pile truck from Independent Highway for $7,000. This truck is similar to the truck we purchased from them two years ago. This purchase will give the airports more flexibility and redundancy in our trucks supporting airport operations. We do not specifically allocate funds for this purchase in our budget, but there are funds available due to lower-than-anticipated expenses in other areas. The fund that we're going to use for this is actually our capital lease account, and we have just about twice as much money in there as we need to purchase this truck. I recommend purchasing this truck.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have... I don't have any questions.
So will this be used at... So this sounds like it's a second truck. Will this be used at the other airport, or how is that working out?
Yeah, it'll be used at both airports. We move all our equipment between both airports. And what this does is basically duplicates the truck that we already have with the size of a dump bed and plow, and it has the ability to pull our equipment trailer as well. So it just gives us a lot more flexibility and more carrying capacity in both summer and winter.
Okay, thank you. This time I'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the purchase of this used pile truck and have the chair sign administratively.
I'll step down in a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any further deliberation?
No deliberation.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is facilities.
Can I just give you my memo to read? Good morning, Teddy Lupton, Director of Public Works, for the record. The Facilities Department is requesting permission to move forward with the proposed winter snow removal contract for Lippert excavation and pipeline to maintain the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center parking area for the winter of 2025, 2026. Attached along with the memo are the rates for sanding, de-ice application, shoveling, and snow removal. The snow removal contract is similar to last year's. Pricing has increased a minimal amount. The service would come out of budget 03410-8680, contract snow removal. The pickup was plow per hour, the greater rental, the skid steer rental per hour, and the dump truck rental per hour went up $10 an hour each. The price per pound of the de-icer has stayed the same. The sanding and de-icing services, which are available upon request, has stayed the same. I have had auditing, risk, and legal approval. I also have called a few other places regarding snow removal to see if there's any interest or if they can give us the quality and fast, accurate service that we have been receiving from Lippert. And I could not find anybody that was interested, nor could they guarantee the same services.
Okay, do we have any questions?
No question, just a comment. I appreciate that you did do the checking because that was a comment that we had made kind of last season of making sure we're getting the best price, even though it has been kind of well-known in the county that in terms of what you're seeking, that they have always been the best service that the county has had. But doing your due diligence to be able to say we did look and they still remain the best.
Well, in a year's time, you never know. Something could have changed.
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I'm assuming it's the granule de-icer, not liquid de-icer. If they're doing it by the pound, do you have any idea on that?
You know, actually, I don't know. Devin, do you know if they put down granule or liquid? Do they use like the mag or do they use...
They usually come out about four in the morning. That's why I'm not typically there. But I do believe that it's... I've seen them use both. I think they have two different... I think it's posturing.
Okay. The price just seems a little bit high, but if it hasn't changed over the last couple of years?
Yeah, it hasn't changed. And that is upon request.
Okay.
It's not a... They automatically do it.
All right. Then my other question is, is it standard on our contracts to allow no liability on their part for damage to the parking stops, striping, asphalt, gouges, et cetera? They're not going to be liable for any damage that they cause? They're at the bottom of page one there?
That's been a standard.
That's standard?
There has not been anything, any damage done. I'm not saying that there's not going to be.
You reserve the right for damage?
I reserve the right to change my mind at a later date.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm just gonna wing it and say I move to approve the contract with Lippert excavation. There we go. That works.
That works.
Yeah.
At the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center. I'll step down and second that. Any public comment? Seeing none, any further deliberation?
None.
Roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to District Two Commissioner report.
All righty, so ongoing issues, concerns, and updates. So I... A lot of people have messaged about the mixed-use item on the comprehensive plan with a question about who worked on that and how it impacts one person's property. That legal opinion was requested from Louis Marshall. I did check in with him. He has sent that request for review to an outside attorney because of the questions that were contained in some of the emails that community members sent me. And so that is being worked on. He hasn't... I did remind him that in part, I would like to know the answer to that question before the board votes on that particular issue. before the board votes on that particular issue. The board heard the mixed-use definition and application last week. I have some questions on the concerns that were brought forward, but legal is reviewing that particular question, so I'll give you guys an update when that, when that comes forward. I have heard some concerns regarding in general how the board had, we did our, we did our open discussion about who was going to sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've received some emails actually from the people that were seated that they haven't gotten good direction from the planning department as to where's my information of when I start, where's the laptop, how does it work? And so I did send that message over to the interim director so that he could give a response to those of you who sent an email to me. That message has been heard. In terms of what I have been focused on right now, it has been, there's been a grant that has come out from the federal government that the counties actually weren't asked to comment on. It's called the Rural Health Transformation Grant. It's a federal grant that had $50 billion set aside for it. We, I, if you remember, it feels like it was decades ago, but it was really like two years ago, I became a grant consultant and it popped in my box and I said, I never saw this grant application request from the counties. And in part, the first part of the grant is really guaranteed if you ask for it, but the second part of the grant is dependent on the progress and success of what you put forward and the dollars then become open to interpretation as they're distributed. I did get confirmation that the, our health district is going to apply for the grant. So there was a meeting with the directors of the health districts across the state. I have sent some people out the survey because they kind of did a picking and choosing of who filled that survey out and I want to saturate the survey for our county because I want recognition that we need rural health transformation. So our hospital applied, Kniqsu Health applied, our Panhandle Health District applied. I sent in a response as a county and I've sent it to Fire EMS for as many people in our area to apply to give our, the voice of Bonner County, more people chiming in to the governor that we want to participate with this, we need this, we can use these funds. It's a significant amount of money to go after. And so the due date for the survey, if I've sent it to you, is actually today. And so if you didn't get the survey and you think that filling out the survey would be beneficial, you don't have to have a plan, you just have to say, I'd like my area to receive the money because you identify what county you're in for that. That survey can be found on the CMS website. Since I see you writing it down, I'm just going to email you a link to it. But anybody can fill this out. Members of the general public can fill this survey out. So I'm encouraging everybody to fill it out on behalf of our county because we need to draw attention and I'll also send it to you. I'll send it to everybody in this room. So that's a, it's a big deal and if you know somebody that will fill it out, forward it on. If you're not a member of government, just select option number one and then move through the survey. You don't have to have a plan, you just have to say essentially, we want some money up here. That is one of the grants that I'm working on. I have to give a shout out, thank you to members of the state of Idaho. I sit on quite a few boards at the state level focusing on health, mental health and especially behavior suicide prevention. And so I got an opportunity to meet with Wendy Young and with our state, one of our state members who addresses suicide prevention, Betsy Hammer. And so she identified a grant that would be available for Bonner County to take a look at as it relates to EMS services to look at a community-based program that can help reduce some of the strain on EMS. And so I'm working with her on how does Bonner County EMS apply for that type of grant? It's a good amount of money, it's not, it's one of those things that helps you get everything started and then the county has to start addressing, how do we maintain something like that? So one of the contacts that we're going to try to do is getting Magellan, who does a lot of that, kind of the medical programs where you're writing your, I just drew a blank on it, your medical reporting chart notes type situation, to actually have a conversation with Bonner County about how we become more visible at that layer so that when the state is seeing there's opportunities for things that they hear, Bonner County is a place where we can benefit from that. Currently, in Washington County, they have, they are piloting the program of community-based EMS and what that is, is a paramedic in a truck arriving at, at a location where you didn't need the full-on bus, but maybe you just needed assistance because it was a diabetic issue and treating it in the home doesn't require, which is what our current EMS do, they're not necessarily needing to transport that person, but they're needing to help with that crisis. That could potentially present a benefit to Bonner County, especially when you look at our footprint. So that is a huge grant opportunity for the county and so those two are what I'm trying to kind of expedite addressing. One of the things that we talked about also is Bonner County doesn't go a single month where we do not have a suicide in our county. And one of the things is we need to have more awareness. This Saturday is that lock that I mentioned last week, starting at the Rainbow Garbage Can area place. I know people didn't like that, but that's where, where the lock starts. But drawing more attention to suicide, the resources that we need here, because we do have suicide in our county every single month. And so one of the things that we talked about was doing a different style commissioner chat with a test run on 988, which would be us dialing 988 to see how the process works so that we can be better educated as a community of how that operates. 988 is open to people doing that because it helps give them feedback on how the call went. One of the other things that we talked about is crisis intervention is very, for, for the term crisis, the idea that the wait time can be up to an hour and 20 minutes is very long. So how do we address services that don't take an hour and 20 minutes? And in part, it is bringing more attention to our area versus the attention staying in southern Idaho. So those are some big parts to work on. There is, I do have a, kind of on a Panhandle Health question. We, as a county, had issues with the limited services through clinical services that exist in our county. It was one of the tenants by which we addressed our dislike of the budget recommendation that they had. So when our last discussion with the Director Kettner was that we were going to, as a district, Panhandle district, move away from clinical services because the data did not support that. And so we did have a meeting with Dr. Fletcher where he came with a medical director and it does appear as if now they are going to switch positions. However, that doesn't change that the data doesn't support clinical services. And so I do have a conversation started with Eric Kettner regarding, how do we go from the data doesn't work to shifting a position? Because Bonner County pays out, this budget cycle, we will have paid out almost half a million dollars. And what we identified is that the big thing that we get is we pay for our permits, but in terms of clinical services, it's one time a week. And is, and our question was, does that pull away from private industry and their ability to have the market? Is that the role of government? And there was, there appeared to be a meeting of the minds that maybe that wasn't the right direction. And so we need to address, as a county, what direction do we as a county want our two seated members on Panhandle Health Board to push? It's not to push individual agendas, it's to push what the county wants. And so I'm, I've asked for both of them to come forward so we can address that issue because the county's position didn't shift, but appeared, but it does appear as if individuals have shifted that opinion to change that direction. And I would like to understand why we would do that as a county. So that's in the works. In terms of open board positions, we have the position on the zoning board that has reopened. If you recall, we did not seat a person and so that went back out for a call to apply for that position. If you applied and you were not seated, you are free to reapply for that position. We are going to hold the interviews again, the same way that we did before. It was beneficial. I know some people gave me comments that they felt that some people were answering based on another person. And I, I don't agree that we need to change because in part, one argument can be that when you're sitting being interviewed and someone gave the answer you wanted to give, you should know the topic enough that you can shift such that you rise above to become the better applicant. And so I'm, I felt that it was good to see that because you got to see the depth of somebody's knowledge on a topic. So right now, the board has not indicated that we're going to change that particular interview style, but that position is open and it is a one-year position to cover a seat that was vacated. And once that one year is up, then the three-year seat will be put forward. Right now, that is, that's a lot of what I'm working on. I will add that I'm still very focused on risk mitigation of litigation, working on mediation and settlement to reduce the exposure. A lot of that doesn't come out in the open just because it is protecting the interest of the county. But I'll give a nod to Christian because I do, we did a claims review yesterday, was not satisfied with the presentation from who we pay. And so Christian and I are working to address our county issues and concerns with the person that, our executive director of SIF, because we need, one of the things with workers' compensation claims is, it isn't just the number of claims, it's a claim that stays open, that impacts your experience rating, that impacts your rate. And so as we are trying to bring our issues to closure faster, we're trying to make sure that we're managing the people that we get service from. I am working with outside counsel on some of our federal cases. They're doing a, we're doing a better job of open communication. And thank you to Nate, who's done a really good job of what I say. I've had a conversation with this attorney. I will send it over to him and he recognizes that, thanks for the update, this is, you know, what I'll do, I'll respond to, so there's better communication there. But we do have one new case that came forward. Technically, you just have heard about it unofficially. We did have the, the county got pulled into the railroad case. But you kind of are already adjacent aware of it, it just wasn't an official type of case. We are working on educating and training EMS and law enforcement, how we get resources from the state to do crisis intervention training at this time. So with that, does anybody have any questions on all of the stuff or some of the stuff I said? All right, thank you.
All right. District Three Commissioners Report. I'm working with the fairgrounds on our water system out there. It seems to be an ongoing issue. I want to make a public announcement on that. At this time, we do not have any water for public usage. We're looking into possibly figuring out some kind of a machine or something that people can pay and get money out of there, but we don't have that at this time. I think we're making great progress with HR riding our ship. There's a lot of work to be done and look forward to building those relations. I want to give a shout out to our Tom at our Veterans Center. He's doing some great work down there. I'm hearing some great feedback and if any of the veterans out there in Bonner County are looking for assistance on anything related to veterans, please come down and visit Tom. Last is a, announced this Saturday and this Sunday, we have the Panhandle Preparedness Expo, which is sponsored by our Bonner County Emergency Manager. This weekend, we're, I think it's from nine to five on Saturday and Sunday, so if you guys are interested in preparedness items, get down there and take a look at the show. That's all I have.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I forgot, the fair has 90 days to come before the board regarding how the fair went. So we are aware of that, the, they have been asked to contact the board and get on the agenda as that 90 days goes across our holiday period of time, so we want to make sure that we get that taken care of. So that, that is not lost on the commissioners. We have asked them to identify when they'll be ready to have that conversation. Some people have asked about that report.
Public service announcement to the fair board. Yes, sir?
John Loombrin, the fair director, question regarding that. Is that request to the fairground, like the fair manager, fair employees report or does the fair board present that information to the commissioners?
The fair has to come forward in the way, so it can be the manager or the chair of the board. Typically, you would see the fair manager, the fair board, and they may potentially actually also bring their bookkeeper, the treasurer, to come in to go over the finances of the, that particular event.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'll open it up for public comment.
Mike Rosdale, Bonner County Clerk. I should have said this when I was up earlier. The city of Sandpoint residents received a flyer in the mail basically saying that early voting started earlier than it actually does. Early voting starts for everybody who votes in the city of Sandpoint, October 20th. So it's Monday, October 20th for two weeks. Don't come the week before that because we in fact will not be having early voting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
John Dupree, a resident of Bonner County. I want to give a 10,000-foot view of things here. When my wife and I decided to move up to this area, we looked all over the place. I grew up in California. I saw urban sprawl happening and I see that happening down in Cootney County. I live right on the border and so I'm over there and I'm over here. I'm glad to live in the bulwark of urban, small community, that people can relate to people and love one another. When I was driving around looking at everything, I came to the conclusion that Spokane, Coeur d'Alene, Athol, Rotherham, that is going to be Los Angeles in the period of my lifetime. I don't want to see that happening up here. So we now have new planning commission, zoning and all that. I campaigned for you guys because I want you to micromanage all of those plans to turn this into a parking lot with skyrisings. And all of a sudden, what is wonderful about Bonner County is lost. I don't want to see that happen. Now, I'm not going to live long enough to see that occur, but the decisions you make are going to affect what is going to be. And like the old slogan says, the problems of the day are the results of yesterday's decisions. And so I observed a prior commissioner team that was at war with each other and the public and it was traumatic and I hated to see that happen. I see better communication here and I love the fact that you guys are really getting into the details. That's good. But also keep in mind that everything you decide is going to have ramifications. We are going to pay the bill, the tax-paying citizens, for your decisions. We trust you and the people that you bring on board, I hope they are not into building, building, building and we lose the ethos, the ambiance of the beauty of this place. So please, love one another, share with one another. And by the way, I heard that there was somebody that was being interviewed that was using a computer and they were passed over. Well, my brilliant older sister said, you know, knowledge comes in two forms, knowing it and knowing where to find it. Since you can't know everything, it's more important to know where to find it. And I have no problem with somebody using a computer investigating things as interviews occur. In fact, I consider that wisdom.
Anyone else here for public comment? All right, we'll go to Zoom, Jim Lady.
Thank you, Jim Lady Spokane. I want to kind of tag along on Commissioner Corn's comment about veterans. Just let you know that I received an email from the VA stating that in Coeur d'Alene at the community-based outpatient clinic, they'll be having a stand down there and also be issuing flu shots for veterans if they're interested on a walk-in basis on October 17th, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM if you're interested. As far as Commissioner Williams, you were talking about claims and I feel it would be important- be important to categorize claims by departments so the public can see which departments are generating the most claims. This would help in trying to identify causes for the claims and possibly find solutions for that to reduce them. And just talking about what Mr. Dupree talked about, about growth. I grew up in North Idaho, and from me being a kid to now being in my 50s, I can tell you that it has grown a lot and changed, especially Bonner County has changed a ton, and that's just going to keep happening. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none? It is...